Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:05 a.m. We have eight members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Hahn, Mr. LeBange, Ms. Siskowski, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. We do need ten for a quorum. If we had somebody else walk in, if we want more, then we can get the meeting started. Thank you, Mr. Siskowski. Good morning, everybody. And officially, welcome to City Hall. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. For today, Friday, November 2nd, the year is 2001. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., or as close to 10:00 a.m. as possible. We can be viewed live from your cable, Channel 35, or viewed via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, and LeBange, Ms. Siskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla. Twelve members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before we get to presentations, I'd like to ask for a member of the public to please come forward, Mr. Larry Green, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning. Please place your hands on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And Mr. Weiss, before I call him anew to begin the presentations portion of today's meeting, colleagues and members of the public, I'd ask that you join me in welcoming, as the newest City Council member of this great city of Los Angeles, the new representative of the 4th District, Mr. Tom LeBange.
Mr. President, and members of the council, members of the public, thank you very much. I want to first and foremost introduce my wonderful wife, Bridgette LeBange, who's given me great strength and inspiration. I want to remember the great work of John Ferraro, who for 15 years I served and learned so much from. I want to thank you. I want to remember the great work of Tom Bradley when I served on his youth council with Mark Thomas. And I also want to remember the great work of Richard Reardon, who gave me the opportunity to represent him and serve this city citywide and learn more about all of your districts. But finally, I also want to greatly commend and thank our friends at 111 North Hope Street, the people who give us the water and power that feeds this great city of Los Angeles, where I worked for the last year and a half. God bless the Department of Water and Power. Thank you all very much, and it's great to be here, and I look forward to working together for a greater Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I'm sure if you have any questions about which of those buttons to push in front of you, Mr. Holden, I would be more than happy to help. Mr. Weiss, for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it gives me such great pleasure to be here on this great Friday and welcome the greatest fan and the greatest friend the city of Los Angeles ever had, Tom LeBange, to his rightful place on the L.A. City Council. It's wonderful to look up there and see your name on the vote count board, Tom. It's just fabulous. And I'm also very privileged, come on up, come on up, to be joined today by two very distinguished members of the community, Jeanne and Jerry Friedman. And I'd like to take a few moments to ask the council to join me in commending them. Jeanne Friedman was honored last night with the Discovery Award, which is given to extraordinary individuals who are builders, creators, and leaders in their fields and communities. And that description well suits Jeanne Friedman. She was the founding president of the Zimmer Children's Museum, which is one of the jewels in my district at the Jewish Federation headquarters on Wilshire. The focus of this museum is to help children celebrate the challenges of a diverse and ever-changing world. It is an extraordinary resource for children, for the Jewish community, and for the entire Los Angeles community, and she has done so much in that regard. She's also done so many other great things for the community. She was the founding vice president of the Los Angeles Jewish Symphony, vice president of the National Foundation for Jewish Culture. She co-chairs the Culture Committee of the Tel Aviv-Los Angeles Partnership of the Jewish Federation Council. She helped found Shal Hevitt High School, which is the only Orthodox Jewish high school in the city of Los Angeles. And the list goes on and on and on. She is an extraordinary treasure, a resource, and a real mensch, if I may say it, a real, real unique and extraordinary member of our community. I'd like to present to you this certificate of commendation on behalf of the City Council of Los Angeles, and I'd like to present to my colleagues, Ms. Jeanne Friedman.
It's a great, it's a great honor for me to receive this certificate from this city, this great city of ours with our diverse community in which we must all learn to work together, stand together, and be together. We invite all of you to the children's Zimmer Museum to see what we're doing. It's an extraordinary place where children are learning the good values of understanding each other and caring and being sensitive. I really think that it's an institution that the city is, will be proud always, and we thank you so much again for this great honor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Weiss. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation.
Mr. President, members, this is going to be, this presentation can be very entertaining for the City Council, the visitors and guests, and the people of the city of Los Angeles, for sure, with Mr. Torres being here, Albert Torres. This morning, I have the genuine pleasure of introducing to you the man often referred to as Southern California's king of salsa, Albert Torres. Mr. Torres is a dancer, teacher, and promoter of salsa music. He has a wealth of knowledge on the history and heritage of the salsa. He has, and he is an expert in the performance of Latin and Afro-Caribbean music and dance. He has danced with some of Hollywood's most glamorous stars, including Jennifer Lopez. Yeah, and Vanessa Williams, you know what I mean? Albert Torres devotes his time and dollars to arts, education programs, including L.A. Salsa Kids and Children's Life Saving Foundation. Please join me with, join with me in welcoming the man responsible for the current Latin music and dance explosion, Mr. Torres. You guys give a few words here.
First of all, it's a pleasure for me to be honored with the city of L.A. and be a part of the city of L.A., and I want to thank Councilman Nate Holden for acknowledging the hard work that we've been doing in the community and for going out in the community and seeing how the logo of my company is creating unity through salsa, where one more time, through Latin music, we're showing that this music is 100% colorblind and that the only reason you won't move to it is if you don't have a heartbeat, because it will make everyone move. And it has been a pleasure to be a part of the community in the sense of helping everyone from children to traveling all over the world representing Los Angeles. I just got back from Paris with my beautiful wife, and now we're on our way to Japan on Tuesday, taking the message of what Latin music has done for my life has changed it. I'm 16 years clean and sober, and I've changed my life around, and now I'm sharing that with children in the community. We have something that we've put together, maybe that's a little different for the council, but we have two, two quick numbers, one a little shorter than the other. We have the pleasure of having a great performer from Puerto Rico that is in Los Angeles, Mr. Felipe Polanco, with, who we know as the princess of salsa in Los Angeles, Ms. Laura Canellas, coming out and doing a small number for you to show you the style of Puerto Rico. And then we have Edie and Alice Binosa to show you more of the marden stuff, if that's okay with the council. So thank you again, Councilman Nate Holden.
I think we have a hot wire over here, we can plug it in over here if you can't plug it in over there.
This is Mr. Felipe Polanco from Puerto Rico and Laura Canellas.
No quiere la gente, no baila la gente, ahí lo goza la gente, y así lo dice la gente. Arriba la tabla, manificau, cau, cau, cau. A mí que me importa, pero yo vivo mi vida, y así que te importa, tú vives tu vida.
Thank you very much, Mr. Felipe Polanco and Laura Canellas. We have one other quick presentation, and this is by Edie and Alice Binosa. It's a little different. Hope you enjoy it. It's more of the marden stuff on how they're combining different types of dancing with salsa, including hip-hop. Edie and Alice Binosa, Edie known as the salsa freak. Thank you very much.
All right, all right. Let's give this, Albert Torres and this dancing group another round of applause. They deserve it, they've earned it. Start the music so I can cut a rug. All right. I'm very pleased to, where is the salsa music, is it foot trapping, hand clapping? Get up off your chair and dance style of music that is appreciated by diverse audiences around the world, and much of the credit for the audience expansion goes to Albert Torres. By adoption of the City Council, this resolution, indeed my pleasure to present to you the certificate of graduation, commendation, you earned it all. Resolution. And I learned this salsa dance, I learned the dance from Albert Torres and some of his group, that young lady was dancing, I danced with her, and I learned to do it all over again, and we do it very well, and I just love being out there. Invite me again, Albert.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Holden, on behalf of the entirety of the Los Angeles City Council and the nearly 4 million people of the city of Los Angeles, we cannot afford to bypass the opportunity to see you salsa. Mr. Holden.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes, the chair recognizes Ms. Hahn for a presentation.
I think we should have had that one last, because everything else after that is anticlimactic. But, Mr. President and members of the council, I am pleased this morning to honor a very distinguished person in our community, Mark Wernick, who is here this morning with Madeline and his wife Christine, and their two-and-a-half-week-old young son, Mark II. Oh, very cute. Tonight, Mark will be ending his tenure as the president of the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce, and I wanted to take this opportunity to honor Mark and to thank him publicly for his service to that chamber. The Harbor City Harbor Gateway area of the 15th District is a dynamic part of this district, home to a lot of businesses and corporations, and Mark's tenure as the president of this chamber has really helped to increase business activity in that community. Mark actually was a former Economic Development Deputy for Councilman Rudy Savornich. Mark now works for Sorrell Associates, and Mark has also been, or is, the president of the Boys and Girls Club of the South Bay, president-elect of the South Bay Association of Chambers of Commerce, and he's chair of the city of Lomitas, oh, you're going outside of the city of L.A., Community Development Advisory Board, and he's a board member of the Manny Motive Foundation. Mark is a great example of someone who spends probably as much time in his volunteer activities as he does in his full-time job. So on behalf of a very grateful councilwoman and a very grateful city, Mark, we really want to thank you and honor you for your contributions to not only the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce, but to the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
I'll keep it short. Council President Alex Padilla and council members, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you, Councilwoman Janice Hahn. This is definitely a very nice thing, and I really do appreciate it. I do want to thank Councilman Savornich for allowing me to be a part of this community, Harbor City Harbor Gateway, and also I want to thank my former boss, Stephen Afriat, for allowing me to be a part of this chamber. I also want to thank Sorrell Associates, my bosses, Howard Sunken, Hal Dash, and Joe Sorrell, for allowing me to keep doing the work that I do in the community, because it is important to me, and I love the community, the Harbor City Harbor Gateway area. But I also want to thank my wife, who allows me to do this, my family, because without their support, I wouldn't be able to be out there in the community helping others. So thank you very much, I do appreciate it.
Where is Slobodan? Come on up. I am very pleased to prevent, to prevent, to present this certificate of appreciation to Slobodan Demetrov and his wife, Lisa, is here today. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to go to the Richard Reardon Central Library and to see the photo exhibit called "L.A. Neighborhoods," which is Library and to see the photo exhibit called "LA Neighborhoods," which is on exhibit right now till...
March 10.
Till March, so you have some time to go. I just personally went on my lunch hour two days ago to view the exhibit, and it is absolutely a great opportunity for us to see LA Neighborhoods, particularly from San Pedro, and then there's another one in North Hollywood, but I focused on the San Pedro one. And I was impressed, because the LA Times actually wrote an editorial about this LA Neighborhoods exhibit, and I just wanted to read a little bit from that. Photographer Slobodan Demetrov's family came to San Pedro soon after immigrating from Yugoslavia. Quote, "The first friends we made in this new country were from San Pedro. Those that have not passed away are still our friends, as are their children to this day. San Pedro, long regarded as an appendage, is a community that sees this as the moment when it finally receives the attention it deserves. Demetrov's San Pedro is a neighborhood of hard-working people, graceful public places. It's a place where the local Christmas parade is still a big deal, and where a long day on the docks wrestling pallets of frozen swordfish earns you a tall one at the local bar." I'm just reading from the editorial, I really don't know about that. And it ends by saying, "This, after all, is what neighborhoods are really about: life lived in close proximity to family and friends, life with joy and sorrow." If you have not had the opportunity, please go see this neighborhood. Slobodan has captured the San Pedro neighborhood in a way that I have never seen. It is a beautiful exhibit, and I'm really proud, I'm grateful that you have decided to take San Pedro and let the rest of the world know how, what a great place we are. So, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present to you this certificate of appreciation. You want to say something?
Thank you, Councilmembers and Councilwoman Janice Hahn. And one thing that struck me when we came to this country was, central Los Angeles, how heavily populated it was with members from Eastern Europe and Southern Europe, and those communities have since disappeared. But in San Pedro, you still have remnants of that community living there, and it was, fortunately, my privilege and really my joy to photograph it for the public library, and it shows you just what a great resource a public library is to any community.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. The Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes for a presentation.
Buenos dias, Council President, colleagues. As Andrew makes his way up here. I think most of you know this gentleman standing here with me today. On October 10th of this year, the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce Construction Industry Awards Committee presented their 2001 Special Recognition Award to Andrew Adelman. The award dates back to 1949 and is given annually to recognize the outstanding leadership in the building industry. In past years, they have presented the award to architects, contractors, and other members of the construction industry. The award was based on the fact that Andrew has become widely known as someone that the building industry can depend on to get their projects moving and completed. We recognize that one-third of our economy is based on this industry. We, as a city, this body as council, should recognize the contribution of his efforts, not on our behalf as a council, but also as a regional economy, and Andrew has been playing a significant role and has been duly recognized. We continue to find ourselves in this time of crisis, how we improve our communities, removing the blight, tackling the slum housing, making sure that people are following up and performing what they're supposed to be doing when they're pulling the permits for public safety reasons, as well as for the image of our city. It is significant that we provide the kind of support Andrew Adelman deserves. So, on behalf of Alex Padilla, Council President, who has the lead sign on this certificate, and myself, I'd like to present the certificate of commendation to Andrew Adelman.
Thank you, Councilmember. On behalf of, on behalf of 900 hard-working men and women in the Department of Building and Safety, many of whom have joined me today, thank you for coming this morning. I want to thank you for this award and this recognition. This is the work of the Department of Building and Safety employees, 900 employees who work day and day out, very hard. I just happen to be the captain, they do the hard work, and thank you for this recognition on behalf of the department. Particularly what transpired on September 11 put the issue of the building safety more into focus, and the importance of that. I was particularly honored, on behalf of the department, to receive this award, because the other recipient of this award, and of course, Councilmember Alex Peri, received that award on behalf of our beloved Council President of long time, Councilmember John Ferraro. Thank you for this recognition, and again, thank you to the members of the Department of Building and Safety for doing a great job day in, day out. You are the one who received this award.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, members of the Council, it's, this is another good earthkeeping presentation. As you, some of you know, a number of years ago, I established the Good Earthkeeping Awards, and they are exactly what they sound like. They're a takeoff on good housekeeping awards, it's just a bigger house. And this year, it's my pleasure, this, today, it's my pleasure to present to two companies, but you'll notice one set of people here, because they're all the same. Can everybody else go? You guys coming up? I want you to have reinforcements here. The winners this year of the 2001 Waste Reduction Awards Program, known as RAP, as in, that's a rap, are the Staples Center and the LA Arena Land Company, which actually owns the Staples Center. Tim Lewicki is President of both of those companies, we have your basic interlocking directorate here before us. The RAP Award is sponsored by the California Waste Management Board, the same guys who tell us to recycle everything and reduce the amount of waste that we have to send to landfills. It's the state's primary recycling agency, and it's part of the State of California's effort to ensure that what we do here in Los Angeles, we are doing statewide. So, this award recognizes outstanding efforts to reduce waste and thereby protect the environment. And this year, Staples Arena, which I'm sure you all know from reading the sign, is the year 2000 Polestar Arena of the Year, and well it should be, has diverted thousands of tons of materials from landfills, and the result is significant cost savings, and both in waste disposal and in what they have to buy. They've recycled, over the last year, they've diverted over 50% of the operational waste that would otherwise have gone to landfills, and that's more than 1,700 tons of materials. So, the next time you throw something in the garbage, think how much of the 1,700 tons is yours. The LA Arena Land Company, which is the development entity for Staples Center, has implemented a comprehensive waste management and recycling plan since 1998 by partnering with the City of LA, and has diverted over 98% of waste debris that, from the construction, that's more than 16,000 tons, which is a lot of elements, from landfills. So, we want to join the State of California and, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, present both companies, I'm going to give you both at once. The Good Earthkeeping Award from the City of Los Angeles, Tim Lewicki, Chris Wajewski, Bob Grant, who are all part of the group that has to make this work, with our congratulatory. And you get to say something if you want. You can say anything you want.
Well, I watched Nate dance, I'm not going to say anything after that. On behalf of the 2,400 employees of Staples Center, we thank you for this award and this recognition, and in particular, I want to acknowledge your direction and leadership to begin with, because it is the goals and standards you set for us that we follow that allow us to be conscientious back to the environment. Thank you.
It's nice of you to say so, because as I recall, our earlier conversations weren't quite that friendly. So, glad to see that you've seen the light, and it's working out well for all of us. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galant. Mr. Stein for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Joining me are some members of the Los Angeles Police Department, also some volunteers who have devoted countless hours in helping solve cases with something rather unique, and that uniqueness being canine bloodhounds. We've got some cases to illustrate, and joining me Lieutenant Debbie McCarthy and Detective John Alviani, and they're going to relate a couple of the situations that have brought to my attention, the impact of these individuals, and what they have done to help solve some very serious crimes within the city of Los Angeles. Lieutenant.
Thank you. The successes of the dogs have been many, and today we've chosen two different scenarios involving children, and it's near and dear to most of our hearts, because most of ours are parents. The first situation involved a seven-year-old girl who was in her bedroom. The suspect entered the second floor, the second story through a window, after he took the ladder off of the father's truck. He entered through the window, he wore socks on his hands so as not to leave fingerprints. He went in, he sexually assaulted the seven-year-old, he discarded the socks. When asked why she didn't scream for her parents' help, the little girl said she was afraid that they would kill her parents if she screamed and they came to her aid. The suspect jumped out of the window and fled. The little girl was transported to the hospital where she was treated, and she had to have surgery for her injuries that were so significant from the sexual assault. The dogs were brought in, they scented, they extracted scent from the socks, and the dogs led the handlers five to seven blocks where they identified a possible location. A second dog was brought in, the dog was used to discriminate between the scent, he also alerted on the location. The suspect was later identified as being a man who would pick up a neighbor, a young neighbor girl, and transport her to his house for babysitting purposes, and obviously he had identified the young girl as a victim when he would visit the neighborhood. The suspect was arrested, and we're pending trial on that particular case.
I'm Detective John Alviani with Robbery-Homicide Division. The case that I was going to profile this morning dates back to January of 2000, out in Pacific Palisades. It also involved a home invasion rape involving a 12-year-old girl who had been asleep in bed, home alone, her mother had just left for work. The suspect entered through an unlocked window and assaulted the young girl in her bed. The girl was unable to identify her assailant, because he was wearing a black rubber gas mask at the time, long-sleeved clothing, latex gloves, and he was armed with a knife. After he assaulted her, he fled out the back, and we were summoned to investigate the case. The only thing that detectives and patrol officers found at the scene was a knit cap left in the alleyway that the victim had described as her assailant having worn. Not a whole lot of evidence to go on, no fingerprints, nothing. The victim could not even identify her assailant in terms of whether he was black, white, Hispanic, Asian, what have you. Recognizing the abilities of Joe Delora and Ted Ham and their dogs, we called them out to the scene, they actually vacuumed scent off of the knit cap in the alleyway, and the bloodhound trailed to a neighbor's house, where there was an 18-year-old male that was, had been home alone at the time of the assault. He claimed that he knew nothing about it, we believed otherwise. We had him voluntarily accompany us to West LA Station for further questioning. At the station, we had the two handlers follow a few minutes later to see if they would be able to pick up a scent at the station that matched the scent that they had been trailing. The dogs picked up the scent in the parking lot where the suspect had been transported to, followed scent through the parking lot, through the back door, up the stairs, across the squad room, to the interview room where the individual was being interviewed. At that point, the suspect did not want to cooperate anymore and felt that maybe he wanted to go home. Again, we had, we had thoughts otherwise, he was placed under arrest at that time, but the investigation wasn't through. Using the other dog, which is a chocolate lab scent discriminator, they vacuumed scent off of the chair that this young man had been sitting in in the interview room, and then vacuumed scent off of three other chairs at random throughout the station, and kind of did like a blind taste test out in the parking lot. They, they took scent that was recovered off of a knife that we also found at the scene. The chocolate lab took, using that scent, compared it to the four scent pads from the four different chairs, and identified the chair that the individual had been sitting on as the individual that was linked to the, to the knife. As a result of that, we had, the suspect was, was arrested and booked for that crime. We were able to gather evidence off of his, off of this person, biological evidence, which ultimately linked him through DNA to the victim. As a result of their prompt response, we also were able to, and what they were able to develop for us in terms of probable cause, we served a search warrant on the individuals, on the suspect's residence. We found the gas mask and the gloves and the shoes and everything else that matched the crime. That suspect was just convicted last month and will spend the next 25 years of life in
Now, we've seen what these individuals have done, and you may ask how much they get paid to perform this critical service to the people of Los Angeles County and Los Angeles City. They are volunteers, they do this for free. They're on call 24 hours a day. Our department appreciates the cooperation with the Sheriff's Department in letting us use their, their resources and their canines in responding to the most heinous crimes that are committed in our society. I'm proud to recognize Ted Ham, volunteer scent evidence canine handler from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for his assistance in providing that great benefit to the City of Los Angeles and to the Los Angeles Police Department, Ted Ham.
All right. Now, just, thank you very much.
That's a man short and brief.
Thank you, Ted.
Also, I'm not done yet.
No.
Okay. Joe Delora, D. Alora. Joe is the other handler who we have here with us, and Joe's also reminded me that Scarlett, one of the canines that was involved in both of these cases, passed away. We have recognition and tribute for Scarlett for the fine work that Scarlett did, and also we have a recognition for Joe, and Joe, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you.
Also want to recognize Captain Tetrow, Captain Jim Tetrow, the commanding officer of Robbery-Homicide Division, and his two representatives who are here, who worked with these people to make our city a safer, better place for all. Thank you, Captain, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. I think these volunteers deserve another big round of applause for what they do for the city and the county of Los Angeles. And we thank you very, very much on behalf of the people of the city of Los Angeles. All right, as they leave, the Chair now recognizes Councilmember Alex Padilla. Is it Padilla? it Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, standing behind me is the vast majority of my team. My team being my staff, both City Hall, but particularly my field. You saw me stand here just over a month ago and bid farewell to a member of my staff who was onto the mayor's office, and today I have the opportunity, with mixed feelings, to once again do the same. Today, I wanted to celebrate Amelia Herrera Portles and all that she's done for my office and for my district in the last couple of years. Before joining my staff, she worked with a nonprofit organization in the northeast San Fernando Valley, helping educate the public on issues of tobacco and alcohol and general health issues. And she joined my office with a lot of passion, with a lot of commitment, and as a constituent, to help the families of the northeast Valley. She's been serving as one of my field deputies, mainly in charge of the Pacoima area within my district, which is really the heart of the 7th Council District. And she's tackled on a number of projects and a number of issues, from basic infrastructure to the annual Pacoima Christmas Parade, Pacoima Pride Day, on and on and on, having been involved with generating support for the Children's Museum, overseeing the reconstruction of our library, and so many other things. And I can't say enough about how much I appreciate her work and her dedication. But to describe it most effectively, I think I'd have to say that her biggest source of frustration in the job is not being able to do more. As you drive up and down those streets and we see the bulky item pickup going on, as we see the potholes in the streets and the sidewalks that need to be filled, she's the one pumping her fist even more so than I am about, we need more, we need more, we need more, we need more funds for this, we need more from the department. Our constituents deserve more, and they deserve better. And it's that passion and her list of accomplishments that has drawn, I believe, the mayor's office to not only recruit her, but draft her from the ranks of the northeast Valley. And she goes on, not to the mayor's office, but to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, to serve as, I guess what's technically called, a regional project coordinator, but really an organizer and a leader and a liaison for the communities of the northeast San Fernando Valley directly to City Hall, so that they can best advocate for themselves for those resources that Amelia has worked to provide as my field deputy for the last couple of years, and as we all hope Neighborhood Council leads, for those constituencies to advocate and effectively bring for themselves. So Amelia, I don't know how else to say this, but a big thank you and a big hug to you and to all your family for the heart and the soul that you poured into the job these last couple of years.
Councilman Padilla, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, I'm so emotional, for your leadership. Gracias for everything. I mean, and I couldn't have done it with my staff, your staff, but these are like my second familia, my brothers and sisters that are working day in, day out to empower our constituents and help them remove the graffiti and pick up the bulky item and show them how to make the city of L.A. a world-class city. So I just want to thank you again. Thank you, everybody. I'm not going too far, I'm just going like a block down, and I'm still part of the city of L.A., so it's not goodbye, it's just hasta la vista un ratito. Thank you so much for everything.
And thank you for not calling me Chaparral in front of everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and congratulations to the staff and those who are going off to do other things in their career. We now recognize Councilmember from the 13th Council District, the Honorable Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to join in the congratulations of our newest Councilmember, Tom Labonge, who I'm very excited, finally have a neighbor. And I'd like to invite him to join me for this presentation, since we are honoring Hollywood, of which we share.
This is Tom's first.
His first presentation.
As a member of the council, and we wanted to be a memorable occasion. Look at him choreographing. Go ahead, Tom, do what you do.
You know every presentation is helped if you have Tom Labonge by your side. Today, we are honoring the baseball team from the Hollywood Rec Center. These 14 players and three coaches won the Los Angeles City Major Division One Baseball Championship, and I know we have many ex-baseball players in the stands, from our council president, Mr. Padilla, who pitched at MIT, I think both Tom and I played ball as well, I'm sure many other folks. And though a lot of people right now are watching the World Series in August here, we had something just as dramatic as some of the games here at the Beatpec Park. In an 8-7 classic game, this team overcame great adversity to win the city championships. They defeated five teams, and this was the first city championship won by the Hollywood Recreation Center. So it is my great honor to present these certificates to the coaches and the team who will mention by name. I don't know if you want to say something before that, Tom? Tom Labonge for his first council presentation, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Councilman Garcetti, Mr. President, members of council, and to this fine team of city champions. Let's thank your coaches, because it's your coaches who taught you how to play well, how to play hard, and play fair. Let's give them a big hand. And Jeremy Lanier, where's Jeremy? Come on up, Jeremy. Coach Jeremy Lemire, Lemire.
Coach Harold Carter is next.
Coach Arturo Champeau.
Go ahead, you say. I'll give them to you.
Marvin Rosales.
Francisco Quinones. All right. David Lupercio. Edward Pineda. Rudell Roman. Diego Vasquez. Joshua Finley. Kingly Cifuentes. Luis Cornejo. Devon Carter. Devon Carter, excuse me, Devon Carter, thank you for correcting me. Congratulations. Robert Servigny. Christopher Cruz. Oscar Ayala. Daniel Tellis. Oh, you got a quick word from the coach? The park director.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the city of Los Angeles for having such a great tournament. Our kids played hard. The bottom line is, is that they learned a lot of sportsmanship, and we encourage these young men to stay in school, make sure they go to college, because a lot of them have futures in baseball, and we want to see them take advantage of it. And we appreciate it, and we want to thank the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for an announcement.
Mr. President and colleagues, I simply wanted to make an announcement that our staff from El Pueblo we're going to make on Wednesday, however, we did not officially meet. So today is the celebration of Dia de los Muertos at Alvera Street, Placito Alvera. I just wanted to invite everyone, right now through 3:00 p.m., the children's program is happening with art workshop, face painting, mask making, storytelling, and a puppet show and a piñata. Also, in the evening, obviously after sunset, they will have the procession, the procession and blessing of the altars at 6:00 p.m. They will also have entertainment from 7:00 to 9:00 at the quiosco. And to remind you all that we are having this great event tonight, we are going to be giving you all a little calavera, which is part of the ritual of honoring the dead and remembering those individuals who are part of our family and our lives, even after they passed on to another life, or however you may believe in your faith. But this is what we'll be passing out to everyone, so I'll be giving you all a little calavera, which is a skull for the Day of the Dead celebration. So we invite you all to Placito Alvera tonight to enjoy the festivities.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Clerk, next order of business, please. Approval of the minute. Mr. Labonge moves and Ms. Han seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Pacheco seconds. Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number 22, request from Council District 13 to continue that matter till November 9. Request colleagues to continue item 22, without objection. Item number 25, request from Council District 9 to continue that matter till November 27. Request to continue item number 25, also without objection. And item number 56C, request from the city attorney to continue that closed session matter till November 7. Item 56C, colleagues, without objection, that shall be continued. To bring you back to the regular agenda, items numbers two and three are commission appointments. The appointment of Christopher Pack and Mike Roost to the Board of Wreck and Park Commission. If they are here, let them please come forward now. Has a public hearing been held in committee on these items? I believe so. Members wishing to speak, Mr. Weiss.
And we did hold, we did hold a public hearing in committee with respect to the nominations of Mr. Christopher Pack and Mr. Mike Roost, and the committee reported them out with a recommendation that the council approve the nominations. Mr. Roost communicated with my office earlier this week that he had a trip that he had to take, and he couldn't, he couldn't switch it around, so he couldn't be with us here today. I'd ask the members of the council to approve both Mr. Roost and Mr. Pack. They're going to be a real credit to this commission. They have a lot of experience between them on this commission, on other commissions, and in service to the community in many other ways. They understand the challenges that we face in the recreation and parks area, and they understand full well the challenges that we face now in an era where budgeting is a much more thankless task than it's ever been. I don't know if you'd like to comment on that briefly, Mr. Pack, before I ask my colleagues to unanimously approve your nomination?
Sure. First of all, thank you very much for your support for my nomination. This will be my fifth commission for the city of Los Angeles that I serve, and do it with a lot of pride and a lot of enthusiasm. This particular commission is one that would be very dear to me, since I have two young boys who use the park system, and I certainly would like to see us maintain, improve, continue to sort of repair the parks that we have, and see how we can work with perhaps the school districts and some of the other agencies to enhance the parks that we do have. It is the quality of life that would be improved, and certainly I'll do the best I can to make sure that we'll continue that work.
Well, I wish you the best of luck, Mr. Pack.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, I do, I know of your dedicated and passionate commitment to these volunteer positions in the city of Los Angeles. One of the things I'm concerned about, particularly as the chair of the Education Committee, is I'd like to hear your response on how our Department of Recreation and Parks can work more closely with the L.A. Unified School District to provide joint use agreements and cooperative opportunities for the young people of Los Angeles.
Funny you mention that. Actually, I was having lunch yesterday with one of the board members, Jose Huizar, talking about how we might be able to share facilities. I think in the designing of facilities, both for Wreck and Park as well as the schools, you know, when we build schools, we have yards, and yet we designed it without trees and facilities that could accommodate public use. And I think certainly that's something that I've asked them to look into in designing our Wreck and Park facilities as well. I think we need to go beyond just providing facilities that would allow for sports activities, but I think we can put in computers, I think we can do arts and craft, I think we can do cultural activities, and I think we've seen a demonstration here of salsa dancing and volunteerism, and I think security is also another area where we can work with the school district, because I know they have security. After school, they're not really there to provide security for the students, but the students come to the parks. And I think there are some services that we can overlap, and certainly would do the best I can to see how we can cooperate in our efforts.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate what you just said. I also, speaking with this school board member, I'd like to also challenge Wreck and Parks to start getting a little bit more creative about how we use our underused parking lots. Our parking lots that right now are sitting idle, lack security, and challenge the nonprofits, the private sector, to look at structures above our parking structures where they could serve as park space, especially in parks star inner-city neighborhoods, and hoping that we can start thinking creatively in that direction. I appreciate your comments. Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Park, ideally it's a good idea to have a partnership with the schools and Wreck and Parks, and in those cases where we can make it work, hey, go full steam ahead. I just wanted to share some information with you, and FYI, and what I mean is that, in my district, for an example, the school district at Lacy's School over there, they wanted to put in a swimming pool and put a gym, have a basketball court out there, the school wanted to make, and then have Wreck and Parks be responsible for managing that after school hours. Well, I want to tell you that the neighborhood council, the neighborhoods went crazy. Said we didn't want those kids in our backyard after school, you know, we don't know what they're doing. And it was a lot of opposition to it. We talked about the seniors could use the swimming pool and aerobics, but it was very difficult to get it approved. I mean, I supported it, could be a backlash, I'm sure, but I want to give you that as an example.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And another example was, I know, years ago, they closed down the basketball court because they didn't like the kids playing basketball. One, people complained, well, they're going to bother us if they continue to play basketball on Sunday. Believe me, telling you. Another situation, I know I worked for Supervisor Han, and this FYI as president, I went to Inglewood years ago, and they said, at that park out there, we're going to shut the park down. Now, we know we need parks, this is a nice park, going to close it down. And I had this little meeting with them, and they were going to vote to do that, the council was. And I says, why? They said, because they're out there every Sunday in the park. And I said, well, what's wrong with that? You know where they are. They didn't take the vote, and the park is still open. So you have to really convince, work with just the Wreck and Parks and the schools, but with the neighborhoods as well.
Yes.
And we can make that happen. I'm, are you committed to do that, Mr. Park?
Yes, sir.
All right, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, we do have the confirmation of both Mr. Pack and Mr. Roost before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed. Forgive to the mayor on that, please. Next item. Item number one on the regular agenda is the item notice for public hearing. Item number one now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. We shall deem the public hearing both open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item number one? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is approved. Items numbers four through nine on the regular agenda, items where public hearings have been held. Item four through nine, colleagues, any specials? Public hearing has been held on these items. Any items to be called special? Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden calls five and six special. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items 4, 7, 8, and 9. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Note for the record that item number 4 is the personal ordinance and will be coming up for a second reading on December 11th. Next item, please. Item numbers 10 through 22, are items for which public hearings have not been held. There is a motion on, amended motion on 16 submitted by Ms. Perry that has been circulated. Okay, items 10 through 22 are before us. We do have cards on items 14 and 15, let's call those special. We also have cards, a card on item number 22 which has been continued. Mr. Larry Green, just want to make sure you do know that item 22 has been continued. Members, any other specials? Mr. Holden?
12 and 21.
12 and 21, called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please. Item number 16 was approved as amended. Items numbers 23 and 24 are currently before you, those are items notice for public hearing. There is a substitute motion that has been distributed on 23 by Mr. Reyes. 23 and 24, notice for public hearing, I do not have request for members of the public to speak on either of those items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any specials? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, 23 and 24.
Mr. Reyes calls both 23 and 24 special. And item 25 has been continued. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk. Items numbers 26 through 48 on the continuation page are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 26 through 48. Members, any specials? Ms. Siskowski calls item 34 special. Mr. Holden?
Forty-six.
Mr. Holden calls 46 special.
Number 39.
Mr. Reyes calls item 39 special. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. A note for the record, Mr. President, item number 29A has been circulated, which is an amended motion by Mr. Weiss. Please open the roll on the items, 29 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please. Items numbers 49 through 55 on the continuation agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held. 49 through 55, members, any specials? 52 called special by Mr. Holden. Busy man. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on 55, please. Next item. Mr. President, that brings you back to item number 5, called special by Councilmember Holden. Before we do that, Ms. Perry, did you wish to speak? Ms. Perry?
Yeah, I want to call 37 special. I'm sorry, I was trying to get up there.
Item 37.
Yeah.
Item 37 has been acted on. Do you wish to reconsider it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider item number 37 by Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is reconsidered and called special. Next item, please. Item number 5, called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, item 5 and 6 was a recommendation from the Controller that came from Audit Committee, and I thought it was very significant for us to hear why the Controller was making certain recommendations relates to items 5 and 6 for the other members of the council to hear that. They're prepared to make a report to the council, fine, otherwise we hold it in the depths until they're able to do that, Mr. President.
Okay, is there somebody here to answer Mr. Holden's questions? Is the department here? If not, let's hold both items 5 and 6 on the desk as we'll try to get somebody here. Next item, please. Item number 12, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Sure, as I've been asking, Mr. President, on item number 12.
Item number 12, before us, any other members wishing to speak or have any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item number 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item 12 is approved. Next item. Item number 14 called special, inasmuch as there's members of the public who wish to speak. Item number 14 now before us, the council calls forward Mr. Larry Green.
Good morning. I first want to thank the President for conferring on me this wonderful honor to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. It was one of, seriously, it was one of the greatest thrills of my life, and I, you'll never know how much it meant to me for you to ask me. I've never been asked that before, and I really want to humbly thank you. It's wonderful. I also want to welcome Councilman Tom Labange, and I purposely signed up for item number 14, so I'd be the first member of the 4th District to publicly talk to Councilman Tom Labange. And they're dancing in Hancock Park, Hollywood Hills, and the Midville District right now as I talk to you.
Do they look any like Mr. Holden?
And Mr. Holden's a great dancer, too. Item number 14 has to do with waivers for community events, and the only reason I want to speak very, very quietly, I know times are the essence, and Council President doesn't like me to talk too long. Some of these items have already taken place, and these are great items, many of them are free, many of them don't cost any amount of money, and I think that the city council should come up with a better way to let the city know about all these great events, such as putting on Channel 35, lots of celebrities in the city of L.A. that'll do the voiceovers for free, so that more people can come to these events. But I'm totally in support of item number 14. Thank you. And congratulations to Tom Labange.
Thank you very much. This closes the public hearing on item number 14. Members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item 14 is approved. Item number 15 is the next item on the agenda, you've called special, inasmuch as there's members of the public who wish to be heard. Item number 15 now before us, the council calls forward Mr. Larry Green.
This is the last item I'll be speaking on before public comment, so you can all be happy about that. Item number 15 is very important. This has to do with an exemption through the Convention Center, $6,500, for a college prep expo, which provides an opportunity for about 4,000 students to obtain valuable information regarding colleges and universities. If we're going to have any hope at all to improve economic development in the city of L.A. and reduce crime, we have to open up the opportunities to go into college. Now, I know you went to MIT and you played sports there. I was on the fencing team at Brandeis University, and we used to fence against MIT. So I know how important college is. Wasn't a football player like you, Tom, not big and strong enough, but I really support this, and you have no idea how much I feel for people that go to conventions. Convention business is down in the city of L.A. because of September 11th. Anything that we can do to help out the convention business, and at the same time, help back the academic future of 4,000 students, I and all the great people in the 4th District totally support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This closes the public hearing on item number 15. Members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item 15 is approved. Next item, please. Item number 21, called special by Councilmember Holden. We also have a card on item number 21. Let's take the public hearing first. The council calls forward Mr. Gerald Wells.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is just a cleanup of a technical typo in our initial Caldera findings. It was the intent of the application all along just to have the off-site sales and no onsite sales, which would also make this consistent with the approved conditional use permitted.
Thank you very much. This closes the public hearing on item number 21. 21 called special by Mr. Holden.
Ms. Garcetti? This is in your district, so I just can ask you a few questions. You are supporting off sale of liquor at this specific site in your district, whatever it is?
Yes. It will be, it's a DFS, like, you know, the foreign, I mean duty-free shops, so sometimes they'll sell like bottles of liquor for tourists and other folks.
For personal consumption.
That's right.
To drink it.
That's right.
Okay. Now, very often when we have an off sale of liquor license, a license to permit off sale of liquor, you get neighborhoods involved and, you know, they saying we forward or we against it. We usually have a neighborhood hearing in the community. Was such a hearing conducted?
There was, the Caldera hearings were gone through and all the.
In the neighborhood?
This is when there was no protest.
I mean, there's a, there's no protest. What they do, have to send out a notice in a certain radius.
Absolutely.
Of the site of sale.
Absolutely.
Was that done? With all those things complied?
Yes.
And there's no opposition?
There's not, that I know of.
Then you're representing your district well. Mr. Thomas, I just wanted to raise that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 23, called special by Councilmember Reyes, there is a substitute motion that has been circulated. Mr. Reyes has called 23 and 24 special. Do you wish to take them together?
Sure. Essentially, 23, we're an amended motion, and we're including Chinatown and Lincoln Heights and Council District 1 for the adaptive reviews, and that's basically the direction of that amendment. And on 24, we're asking to grant the appeal for the reference matter here on 24 in order for us to just close this cycle. My understanding is Council District 2 is fine with that. They just want to be able to just close this issue. Evidently, the applicant is not interested anymore, so we'll just let it go.
Okay. Mr. Reyes has requested an amendment to item 23. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on 23 as amended, as well as 24.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, on 24, you're going to have to adopt the new findings, which are also before you.
Well, let's take the one on 23 by itself first. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Item 24 now, need to adopt findings. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Findings have not been adopted. Now let's open the roll on item 24 as revised. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
24 is approved. Next item, please. Item number 34, called special by Councilmember Ms. Siskowski. Item 34, Ms. Siskowski.
Mr. President, I just have to excuse myself, and I don't know if you want to take 52 at the same time. I called it special for this reason.
Item 34 and 52. Let's take item 34 in a minute here. Believe Ms. Siskowski has left chambers. Anybody else wishing to speak on item 34? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
34 is approved. Next item, please. Do you wish to take 52 out of order also? I believe Mr. Holden had called item 52 special. It was Ms. Siskowski who called it special. Okay. Members wishing to speak on item 52? 52 now before us. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
52 is approved. Forthwith on 52. Next item, please. Item number 37, called special by Councilmember Perry. Item 37 now before us, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this item to give the Department of Recreation and Parks some time to research and come back to the committee and ultimately the council to let us know what their implementation strategy will be. So I'd like 90 days instead of 30 days.
Ms. Perry, you lose to change 90 days as opposed to 30 days on item number 37. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved as amended. Next item, please. Item number 39, called special by Councilmember Reyes. Item 39 now before us, Mr. Reyes.
Council President, colleagues, on this issue, I was asking to get a report back to the committee within 90 days. My understanding is that it's been asked by other offices to extend it out to 120. The sense of my urgency is that if we keep speaking to the issues of housing, how we need to be able to get back our information and move on this policy, that was the main reason why I called it special, see if we can keep it at 90 days. And that's essentially my motion.
Continue 90 days?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes moves continuance for 90 days. That would be February 5th.
No, no, I'm saying, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it's report back in 90 days instead of 120.
Okay. So correction, amended motion to request a report back to be 90 days.
Right.
Quick to report back.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just wanted to say something briefly about this study. I know at one point we had originally proposed to look both at inclusionary zoning, which is the requirement that some percentage of housing that's put forward be affordable, and also to look at linkage fee, which is the idea that because commercial development puts pressure on housing and our housing stock, that that also be looked at. And we've decided to go forward with inclusionary zoning aspect of this and to put off for now at the request of the mayor's office, though they have committed to seeing the linkage fee study done in a few months, that second part of the study. This will allow us to move forward with a number of important parts with the Housing Trust Fund, so that we can look at a small piece of the Housing Trust Fund at least being funded by folks that are creating market rate housing, and that they can either put inclusionary zoning so that housing would be put onsite that's affordable, or they could do an in-loo fee, and this will be a very important step in moving forward on that, and I think, I support the amendment of my colleague as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Burton?
Yes, I don't know about the linkage fee. I haven't looked into that part yet, but I think that there already is a substantial linkage fee on all housing, both for schools and Quimby, and I would be very cautious about anything that would inhibit the creation of housing. But more important, I proposed some time ago, and I hope that we're going to be able to bring this to the council soon, a motion that would require replacement of all affordable housing that's lost through conversion into other types of activities, whether it's market rate housing or whatever, it would require essentially that all the units be replaced, the affordable units, even if it was part of the same project, that at least the number that were removed would have to be replaced as part of that, or else they would have to, they would have to create that number of housings, affordable housing and low-cost housing within a three-mile radius. And the reason for that was so that the families who are displaced would not be disrupted and moved from their communities, the children would not have to leave their schools and so forth. So I would hope that we can get this thing back, and I hope when this study comes back, it's going to include some language that will give us the power to enforce the preservation of low-cost housing and affordable housing. We had a very good example of this with Lincoln Square, where the community plan actually called for preservation, and we didn't have the, we were sued and so forth. We need to make sure that the affordable housing in the city stays affordable. Now, gentrification is great, and we love to see neighborhoods upgraded, but when you take those affordable units away, you're going to have to replace them, either there on the site or in a closed. on the site or in a close proximity so the neighbor, the people are not disrupted from their neighborhood. So I support the, uh, speeding up of the time period before this comes back, and I hope that we're going to be able to make sure that it includes, uh, protection of those units.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Mr. Reyes.
One of my major concerns in working in the Planning and Land Use Management Committee is that we make sure that whatever recommendations come from the other committee that we're working on a parallel track. So we don't find ourselves looking at inclusionary zoning issues with the Housing Department and find out that the land use language is not consistent or it's not going hand in hand with it. So I hate for us to go down one road and finally have to backtrack and start up again on the, on the plum level and find ourselves losing time. So that's my main, uh, focus, and I want to make sure that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We have item thirty-nine now before us as amended. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number forty-six called special by Councilmember Holden. Item forty-six now before us. Mr. Holden.
The President, members, on forty-six, the police department is going to come over and give us a reason for accepting a request of these, except the government furnished equipment, and for what purpose they're going to use it, they're going to explain that to us, it was not critical at the time. So we hold over them to do so. Are they here? All right, fine. Now, this is some government equipment that you're asking for, and, uh, you tell us why you want it, how it came, became available to you, what did you do in order to find that the equipment is available so you can be able to request it? I think it's important for us to know. And the reason why I raised the question, Mr. President, is because I'm sure that may very well be other government furniture, other equipment, they call it GFE, which we could use for the state of Los Angeles. And if this is a good example, then we want to use it in other areas for other departments as well. So you kindly tell us about that.
Yes, sir. The, uh, the Military Proposition and Acquisition Program.
Military Properties Acquisition Program. That's the key.
And, uh, is a, is a program that was set up through the, uh, Department of Defense, through the state of California, to, uh, provide local and state law enforcement the ability to identify and convert military property to, uh, local law enforcement use. Generally, it was designed to aid law enforcement in, uh, dealing with, uh, preparedness for terrorism, anti-drug programs.
Start over because Mr. Pacheco is anything with a key member of the council who would like to know something about terrorists and how we acquired the equipment to make our environment more safe. Go ahead, proceed, sir.
Okay, sir. The background on it is the, uh, specifically, the Secretary of Defense is enabled to transfer federal, to federal state agencies, the property of the Department of Defense, including small arms ammunition and any other equipment suitable for use by agencies--
Any other equipment.
And other--
Catch all. Go ahead.
Suitable for use by agencies in law enforcement activities, including counter-drug, counterterrorism, and general law enforcement activities, as long as that property is excess to the needs of the Department of Defense. The Department, uh, has been involved in this program in its latest, uh, generation since, uh, nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, we have two officers, a supervisor and an officer through the Uniform Support Division, who are authorized to go through the military lists of, uh, property that they have deemed excess and then identify needs on the department for those pieces of property, at which point an application is provided through the state of California, and, uh, an approval is obtained to, to, uh, recover the excess military property and convert it to department use.
On that list, you think you have noticed, you could notice, uh, conveyors, uh, metal detectors, uh, surplus, uh, as opposed to some more off the shelf sophisticated equipment that may be available? But we could, we could use for our use, for our purpose, some of that should be classified as surplus, surplus equipment. If that's the case, we need it now. So would you scan that list?
Absolutely, sir. I'll have my, uh, my people who are authorized to scan the list and look for those types of property.
Right. And I think that every law enforcement agency in the city of Los Angeles should, uh, be notified that such a list is available. Scan the list, see whether or not there's any equipment that we can use that we don't have to pay for, like three point eight billion dollars, that we're about to spend on some equipment, lights, motion detectors, and so on. All right?
Very good, sir.
All right. Mr. President, I think it was worthwhile making note of that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Findings numbers five and six are still on the desk. Called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden.
There's no urgency. Holden is not here, and we can hold that over until Tuesday.
Request to continue until next Tuesday, members? Without objection? Close item till we continue, November sixth. Mr. President, that brings you to the closed session. Item you wish to hold on the desk? Let's hold on to the desk and clear the desk. Uh, we also have a special meeting pending. Did you wish to consider the special meeting at this time? Let's do that. Hold on a second. You probably do that. Mr. Weiss, did you wish to be acknowledged on the special? Okay. Uh, let's call the roll the special meeting. Congressman Glanor Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labange, Missakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, for the Thomas Weiss sign of Padilla. Fourteen members present and a quorum. Mr. President. First item? First item is Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee report. It's an item for which public hearing has been held and is to support federal legislation and funding to provide increased airport security measures. Members wishing to speak on item number one from the special agenda? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you, uh, in your role as Chair of the relevant committee, and, uh, Ms. Galanter in her role as Chair of the Commerce and Energy Committee for, um, getting this matter to the floor before us so quickly. There's so much we need to do, uh, in this city and in this country right now in the area of improving airline security. What this measure does is it puts the city on record as supporting two very important things. Number one, uh, we absolutely must have federal legislation that requires that all domestic checked baggage be screened prior to it being placed on airplanes. And we also need to have federal rules requiring that, that there is a positive identification for every piece of baggage and every passenger so that we don't let bags go on planes when the passengers don't. And secondly, um, we need, we need help from the federal government. Uh, you know, estimates vary. I've heard estimates of about ten million dollars so that we can explore and implement and utilize facial recognition technology as a security measure at LAX, uh, in, before people enter the secure passenger areas. Uh, it's, it is a technology that exists. It, uh, it has been utilized in certain places already in the country and in the world. It can be utilized here in Los Angeles effectively. And I have to tell everybody this, um, in light of what the Congress of the United States or the House of Representatives did yesterday, well, more specifically, in light of what the Republicans in the House, uh, caused us to fail to do, to fail to federalize, uh, workers in the, in the airline, in the airport screening business, uh, it's, it may not be sufficient for us merely to pass a measure such as this one today. The time is coming when this city, when the mayor, when the Airport Commission, and when all of us, uh, are going to have to start to roll up our sleeves and use our leverage and use our muscle to get the airline industry to do some of the things that we're talking about here. Because the sad reality is, as we learned yesterday in Congress, we can't rely on Congress. We couldn't rely on them to federalize, uh, all airline screening workers, uh, the security workers. Then I'd like to think we can rely on them to, uh, to pass the legislation requiring that all domestic luggage that's checked, um, be screened, but that may not be sufficient. So I, I think the mayor and the Airport Commission and all of us need to take a long hard look, and we need to do it right now, of using our leverage at Los Angeles International Airport to bring the airlines, uh, into compliance with, with the only responsible measure that we can, that we can possibly have, which is screening domestic checked luggage. And so I urge my colleagues to join me in making this a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holden.
The CLA here, their rep, who can speak in terms of what happened with the legislation in, in more detail in Washington yesterday?
As the CLA comes forward, I will hold your time.
I know that the mayor's office is now in charge of legislation in Sacramento and in Washington. I would hope that the CLA would, would have been briefed on it.
Somebody from the CLA's office here?
Because this is a, Mr. Deaton is not here and not well represented, apparently.
You may want to look to your left.
Uh, oh, here he is. Mr. Deaton, uh, he's well represented. On the airport, the legislation that was, uh, dealt with yesterday in Washington, addressed at least in any case, but not to our satisfaction. Do you have any information on it, that other, what Mr. Weiss is already talking about that you can share with us, Mr. Deaton?
Just that at this present, at the time--
Hold my time, please.
Present time at a-- because the Senate version and the House version are different. They'll be worked out in conference committee. And, um, my understanding of this president--
What with the version of the House and what with the version of the Senate?
Senate version is federalizing the employees. The House version is you don't, and you contract. My understanding also is the president leans towards the House version. Uh, and, um, there, uh, needless to say, a lot of politics going on relative to votes, uh, but I think it'll all be worked out in conference committee, and I believe it'll be worked out very shortly before the, the people make the reservations to fly on Thanksgiving.
All right. You said the House version does not license?
No. What it does is, it does not require the employees, doesn't, does not federalize the employees. It, um, provides that the FAA will oversee with, uh, criteria and with, um, monitoring the hiring and the requirements for, uh, those, those workers. On the Senate side, the, the bill provides that they will be federal employees and responsible to, uh, a federal agency.
Okay. Mr. President, members, this council without a doubt should support the, the Senate version that is fertilizing, federalizing, uh, the workers at the airport to guarantee safety. We got to put safety before dollars. It appears to me that the House version is in keeping, as you said, with the president's position, that we do not federalize the airport workers and screen them to guarantee that they're qualified and they're supportive of what we do in our country to make it safe for the people who use the airports. That's like not, that's bearing, is bearing from his general statements that he made. Business as usual. We cannot put dollars before safety. And therefore, Mr. President, members, I would like to make a verbal motion that we memorialize the president of the understate and specifically the House, that when this bill goes to the Congress Committee, that they adopt and support the Senate's version, which calls for federalizing the airport workers. And of course, they'd have to pick up the tab or become a surcharge on the ticket. I, I don't mind paying that. The average person don't mind paying that, but somewhere along the line, too many members in the House are thinking about dollars and not enough about safety. So, Mr. President, if I could get a second, Mr.--
Yeah, Mr. Holden, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I, uh, I concur in what you're saying. I think it's very appropriate for this city to go on record supporting the Senate version so that we send a clear message that, um, it is not sufficient for workers who are screening security measures at the gates to be under federal supervision. They ought to be federal employees, just like members of the FBI, the Department of Justice, the Secret Service, the INS, and so forth.
Mr. President, members, I so move. Thank you for a second. Mr. Deaton, your excuse?
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to speak on special one or the item number one of the special agenda? Ms. Galanter.
It might be helpful since we have here the Director of Operations at LAX at Lawa and the Chief of the Airport Police to ask them to come to the table. And, uh, I, I just went over and asked privately, and I'm just going to ask you guys again publicly. I asked if they had an opinion on the, on this. And, uh, Chief Wilson explained to me that the, we can, we can, we just need something. We need at least to have federal supervision, and, uh, perhaps you might describe to us what you just told me about, how the marshals handle U.S. courthouses, which would at least get us started.
Well, actually, what we're discussing is anything is better than what we have now. We have essentially private industry in charge of trying to fight terrorism, and I think that is not working as it's been through and already. Um, the two concepts, one is have the employees be federal employees, uh, at the, at the screening operator level. The other concept is have those employees be contract people with federal supervision of some sort. I think, uh, what I would like to see is, at the very minimum, the supervisor of that screening checkpoint should be a federal employee. Uh, as far as the passers, screeners are concerned, I'm just a little concerned about how they're going to be able to recruit people to staff these positions. We're having a hard time at Airport Police and in the Los Angeles Police Department recruiting our own vacancies. And if we have to go out into the community trying to find people to meet a certain federal standard to be able to do this job, you know, what's the standard going to be and how easy will it be for us to fill this? The other point to make is that this is a, a nationwide program, and it has to fit the whole country ultimately. Uh, how other cities are going to be able to recruit people on a, on a federal level to staff these positions might be an issue. So I think the bottom line is, uh, anything's better than what we have, and either solution would work as far as I'm concerned, as far as I can, I can look at, having an actual federal employee at each screening station supervising whoever does this work, I think is crucial to this.
Mike, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I totally concur. Anything would be better than what we have.
All right. Well, if I may, then with the rest of my time, I'd like to suggest that I think Chief Wilson has raised a point that, that, uh, ought to concern us, which is how fast, no matter what they pass in Congress, how fast can we get it operational? And the, um, screeners, the people who work today for the contractors who do the screening at our airports, when they were in here just a few weeks ago, uh, raised the point, as they have many times over the years in the living wage discussions, that they would welcome supervision that would enable them to do their jobs more effectively. And of course, many of you will remember the time, I think it was in Terminal One, where the screener did exactly what the screener was supposed to do and recognized that there was a gun in a briefcase, but under the rules established by private enterprise was not allowed to report that to the police and had instead to go find the supervisor, and the supervisor was on a coffee break, and so the person with the gun went on through, and the terminal was closed for several hours, and luckily, nothing else happened. But, uh, they, it was that screener and others who came to us and said, we would like to have supervision. We believe, we, the screeners believe we can do the job, we can do it more effectively if we have better supervision and if we don't have to spend all the time worrying about whether we're going to be able to put food on the table next week. So certainly as an interim solution, from what I hear you saying, it seems to me we want to be advocating that, uh, we have, at, at minimum, that we have a federal marshal, that we have federal personnel who know something about security at each checkpoint to supervise the people who are doing the frontline work. And then if they go on to federalize the rest of it, that's another problem because even if they do it immediately, it'll take months to get it through. Okay. Thank you. I would move that we take essentially that position, that what we need is, and I, I think this is not inconsistent with what you said, Mr. Weiss, that what we need is for our advocates in Washington to be pushing for immediate deployment of federal supervisors to help at each checkpoint. And that's the first step, and then we can discuss what goes on after that.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Holden.
Chief, you bothering? If the entire Senate in the United States can say, let's have federal employees there, and you tell me you-- Well, I, I won't be able to do that. That means you can't do the job, is what you're saying. Then he's saying that. He said I can recruit the employees.
I wouldn't be recruiting the employees in any case.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
Federal government.
Now, you're glad to hear that. Now, I'm glad to hear that. Fact of the matter is that the workers are available, even the workers you're using not can be available, it is that they be screened by the federal government. Social Security ID, background checks. If they pass the background checks and dispute the minimum standards to be required, but if they do that job, they can be hired to do it. They can be first in line to do it. Got to have a little vision, a little thinking, you see. Fact of the matter is that, federalize them, yes. As an interim, in the conference committee, you can say, it could become a phased operation of federal supervisor on duty. Yes, you can say that. But to say absolutely, "No, I want this, anything is better," then you should have made it better. You should have made a recommendation to make it better, knowing what the crisis has been over the years, ever since the guy took the gun to the plane. He'd say, "One of them shot the guy with the western, shot the pilot." Remember that one?
Absolutely. Yes, I was there.
All right. Then you, and it's never stopped, one thing after the other, to bomb a airport. Never stopped. Then it's, I would think your job would be to be sitting there saying, "At all time, how can we make it safer?"
I've been doing that for 22 years, Mr. Holden.
But then you should tell somebody here that you've been unsuccessful. The way you've been successful, the way you've been unsuccessful, we could have done something about it to help you. They had a lot of money. They have to use all the money to expand the airport. They could use the money to provide for better safety at the airport. That's what I, if I was sitting in your job, that's what I would have been saying, "Make it safe, and you have more people fly." So I like the motion. If you want to amend it in the conference committee to say, "Phase one, phase two," I have no problem with that. In cooperating with this, Calanter said, but by God, finally, and for last, at last, let's have them federalized. You can recruit locally. You can recruit locally. They'll set up a recruiting and a screening program. They'll establish a policy to make that happen. They did an aerospace industry that had thousands and thousands of workers, and every one of them was screened, every one of them was given a secret clearance in order to work in those environments. And we can do the same thing. There were American people, working hard, dedicated for our safety and security, to provide for that, and they can still do the same thing, they'll do no less. I don't get it. God died, and look what happened. I can't do this, and I can't do that. They'll take you out every time. Yes, we can do everything we need to do to make the airline industry safe.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I don't know how many of you have flown recently, but I had the opportunity to fly to Las Vegas and to Oakland, and I saw the National Guard, which turns us into a third world mentality when we have the military occupation. That, to me, was rather frightening. I took a tour of LAX after September 11th incident. One of the biggest concerns I had, and I discussed this with the airport personnel, was your baggage handlers, your security personnel, not LAX police officers, but Argon Bright Security. And I went into great detail about the screening, about the process, about the badges you wear, what access. And I was assured that everyone that has those badges, Argon Bright Security, had been fully screened, fully checked, they had access, and they were absolutely, totally, completely legit. And I went away with the complete understanding that that was the case. I later learned that it wasn't the case, and the concern and fear I have is, while the LAX police have personnel and do a tremendous job in association with LAPD out there, this private security operation at minimum wage with people who are ex-cons, people who have not been fully screened, because it was a private contract, really jeopardizes the entire public that ventures into that arena. And if we can't make this happen and assure people of security without having a military occupation, which LAX with the National Guard is basically military occupation, which is frightening for us in this country of democracy, liberty, and freedom, there's got to be some balance. And I would completely support my colleagues, and I think that Congress will finally come to the realization, they've got to increase it to make it fair and reasonable. But those security people who are under contract at minimum wage, when you have felons in there who are supposed to be screening and people who are not attentive to their duties and responsibilities, that's a tremendous problem. And it's hurting our economy, it's hurting the environment. Whatever we need to do to strengthen that, not only at LAX, but at the other airports. And another concern I have, that one of my constituents brought to my attention, was the private planes and what security measures taken place for this private aircraft. And we have Van Nuys Airport in the district. What are you doing about that? What about the screening that people get in on those planes? What about that particular situation? Are Argon Bright out there doing the same thing that they're doing at LAX? If you can please respond to those questions. Thank you. I know you went to a new ID card system. Do we have the same problem that we had, that I was assured wasn't a problem, which turned out to be a major problem?
Well, I need to point out that the passenger screeners do not work for the airport, they do not work for the airport police. They currently are on contract to the air carriers under the federal rules. And what's being discussed in Congress is changing that procedure so that whether they're working on contract or whether they're federal employees, they will work, in fact, directly for the federal government, one way or the other, with direct federal oversight, which is what we've been pushing for a number of years. As far as the background checks that are completed, under the current procedure, the air carriers have been responsible for doing their own checks, their own background checks on their own employees. As of December 23rd of last year, that changed. We went to a system where we now do fingerprint checks, and the airport police is responsible for administering that. Unfortunately, the law was very specific in that people who were hired prior to December 23rd would not be subjected to that fingerprint process. My understanding with the events of September 11th is that a number of these things are being reconsidered so that we will, in fact, be able to go back and do background checks on people who were hired prior to that date. The problem we're going to face, though, is it's going to take some time. The resting, it might take as long as two years, just because the backlog, not our fault, the backlog is going to be in Washington getting the things processed. As far as Van Nuys Airport is concerned, and the...
Van Nuys Airport, let me deal with that specifically. Van Nuys Airport, of all the GA airports in California, is probably the most secure. We pride ourselves in what we do out there. We did a threat assessment prior to this incident. We've put security into place. The charter operators, the fixed base operators, have protocols. They're not governed by the FAA. We've talked to them on what they're doing about it, how they're handling their passengers. They have protocols set up where they're requiring IDs of all their passengers, the names of all their passengers getting on any of their aircraft. The other fixed base operators that are doing flight training, all are requiring name recognitions. We're checking this against stop lists that the FBI has provided us. We believe Van Nuys is clearly the most secure general aviation airport in the United States, let alone in Southern California.
Mr. Zine, any further questions? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that it is right at this point to support and to urge the federal government to, once and for all, make these employees who are at the checkpoints, who are screening our baggage, that they become federal employees and that become standardized. Because I think that's the issue across this country, is making sure that it's standardized, that at every airport, we have a standard approach to how we are checking people in, screening their baggage. The airlines, I've met with them on occasion, and they're taking a huge hit during this time, and they have supported the idea of federal employees screening our baggage. The mayor of Los Angeles, as the chairman of the, National Chairman of Security Task Force for the mayors of this country, has urged that we make these employees federal employees. Just last night, in New York, they had a huge security breach at the checkpoint of screening the baggage. They had, over 100 people had gone through. Someone was, happened to be watching them and found out that those screeners were waving people through even though the metal detectors were beeping. They had to bring 100 people back, put them back through. Safety is key. We must be safe, but we must feel safe. And until Americans feel safe, I believe we're going to take a hit locally in our economy and nationally. And in my opinion, it is all about screening the baggage. We cannot continue to have these private firms being contracted with the airlines. There is no standardization. And frankly, that's just not what's going to make it. We can have all the National Guard roaming the airports as much as we want, but if we have not changed fundamentally how we are screening the baggage and checking people through, then people are not going to feel safe and they're not going to be paid. Mayor Hahn, yes. So anyway, I urge today to urge Congress to consider making these employees federal employees. I think that's what we need in America to get us back on track.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Burnson.
Mayor Hahn.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, my understanding is that, although this hasn't been finalized yet in the Senate, I guess, but the bill that the House passed did provide, yeah, it provided for private, but with federal oversight. And I think there was the perception by some people, in fact, that I had originally, but I learned differently this morning, that these people, the reason that some of the members of Congress wanted the private so that they could be fired if they didn't perform properly. But I understand that there is a provision in the bill that says that even though they may be federal employees, that they may be fired, which is a departure from most federal-type activities. And I think it's appropriate in this particular case. So I do think that if we have the federal employees, I think it'll be safer, number one. And if that's possible, I think that should be the route that we go. But at any rate, we need to get moving with it either way. And if we're going to have private companies that are going to be responsible for this, we better have better screening of the employees than we've had in the past, because there has not been adequate screening. And we better have strong federal supervision of those employees. But either way, we need to move forward with it. This is a critical thing, and I don't think that our economy is going to recover until people feel safe, that they can travel and resume their travels for business and pleasure and other things. So I would urge a strong, I guess this is to urge the approval of the system. Is that correct? Is that what the motion is, to urge the implementation of a safety system?
Yes, to urge, it's to urge federal approval of legislation along this line.
So I hope that Congress will get their act together and the president and approve something that we can move forward with immediately. So anyway, I support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Ms. Calanter.
First, I want to apologize to Chief Wilson and Mr. Deaton. When I asked you to come up here, I just asked you to answer questions, not to be a pincushion. And so I want to apologize on behalf of the council for turning you into a pincushion here, or a pair of pincushions. I want you to understand that since, when we get up and talk here, the cameras are somewhere behind us, and we have nobody to talk at, you've whammed up as the target here. And I don't think any of us meant to imply that the whole department wasn't trying to do its utmost to make this better. We all understand that you are not the ones who are going to get to make a lot of these decisions, and that we aren't either. And of course, that's what's really frustrating us. But the point that I was trying to make earlier, which I stand by and which I think the advice of our airport police reinforces, is that we would like Congress to do, to go all the way on this. But even if they do, it's going to take a while to implement it, and we don't want to sit around waiting until they've gotten all the procedures in place and implemented all the procedures to recruit and train and certify and hire all the federal employees. In the meantime, we have, in addition to the employees that Mr. Zine is concerned about, we have lots of very hardworking, honest, sincere people out there who are doing the best they can under difficult circumstances. And the suggestion of Chief Wilson was that by having a federal marshal to supervise the private contract employees, as they do at federal courthouses, that we would improve the situation while we wait for the other stuff to be implemented. So, did I understand you correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't think he was saying, "No, we don't want federal..." He wasn't disagreeing with us. He was just saying, "Don't wait for as long as it takes to get started." And I certainly want to concur with that. I think it's important that we, I'm happy to support your motion. I wanted to suggest, and I will suggest again, that we add a codicil to that that says that, in the meantime, at least start us off with federal marshals at the, like what they do in federal courthouses.
Thank you, Ms. Calanter.
I accept that as a friendly amendment. We can talk about federal courthouses some other time.
Could I add a suggestion? Suggestion is the position we're looking at is called the checkpoint security supervisor, CSS. If that was a federal employee, that would fill the bill for this temporary...
We would like that to happen within 30 days. Let me clear the record. We support the federalization of this process. We would like a federal oversight in 30 days of these contractors that are out there now, and then an implementation of a federalized program for screening of all passengers. I make that perfectly clear. It's a misunderstanding.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great debate, because we, it's really clear how much everybody in this room, how strongly everyone feels about this issue. I just wanted to respond to a point that my colleague, Mr. Zine, made. Along those lines, I've introduced legislation that, along with extensive cooperation with folks from the airport department, the legislation will be heard in Ms. Calanter's committee shortly, that would require background checks of everybody who works at the airport and require identification badges for everybody there, especially people who go into sensitive areas. There is a bit of a loophole here. There's some, there's some areas that fall between the cracks, and it won't happen overnight. We won't be able to snap our fingers, but it's something that we also intend to do. I know the folks at the airport agree that we're working on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I'm glad to hear you say that you're in favor of federalizing the employees. What we cannot afford to become is alarmists as individuals. We have to avoid becoming alarmists. And I'll give you an example of what I mean by that. One airline came, representing, one airline came to my office just the other day and said, "We're losing $20 million a day." Okay, but that's not the bottom line. What is it doing for commerce? What is it doing for businesses around the country and throughout the country and around the world? I mean, you're going to approach not a recession, but a depression if you keep alarming the people. And just yesterday, one alarmist in the state of California said, "Look out, the bridges are going to blow." That was not even confirmed. But it's, is the alarmist jumped on a situation that's not likely to be developed at all. Hey, we got to be careful as public officials, elected and unelected, appointed, not to become alarmists. We must, at any time we make a statement, no matter what position we hold, we must give the assurance to the public that when they fly or do anything else in our community, it's going to be a safe environment, and that we're not going to leave a stone unturned to make it as safe as we possibly can. And when 50 members, 100 members of the Senate says, "That's one way to restore confidence" in the minds of the people who will use our airports, then by God, let's do that. When the mayor of the city of Los Angeles was so respected, he was appointed to chair airport safety for the nation, representing the National League of Cities, and that's the recommendation that they made. That's our mayor. That we cannot digress, deviate from at least the policy that has been established by the National League of Cities, and certainly that which he recommends, we have to do that. We obliged, not just obliged, we're obligated to. So I don't, I'm not throwing pins and darts at anybody. I just want to make sure that you understand the message.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Pacheco.
I'd like to move the previous question on the entire matter.
Previous question has been called. Mr. Garcetti was the only member remaining wishing to speak. He passes. That ends discussion. Mr. Clerk, we have the item before us with at least a couple of amendments. Have they all been received as friendly amendments? I believe they have, given that. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with to the mayor on that. Next item, please. Item number two on the special meeting agenda is a housing and community development report relative to the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for Wright Manor Apartments Project in Council District 9. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is...
This is a project that's been in the offing for many, many, many years. It's an excellent project being put forth by the Economic Development Corporation for Phillips Temple, and it is time sensitive, and I ask for an aye vote, seeing no opposition.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that as well. Next item.
Item number three on the special agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held. It's a motion Reyes Weiss to dedicate the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and Pico Boulevard as Steve Bernard Jackson Square. Item number three of the special agenda now before us, public hearing has not been held, but I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item three of the special agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with? Fourth with on that, please.
That ends your special meeting agenda. Do you wish to adjourn that meeting and go back to the regular meeting?
To adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting.
At the regular meeting, the item on the desk is the closed session item number 56 A, B, and D. Do we have any housekeeping before we adjourn to closed session? Motions for posting or referral?
Those motions are posted and referred. And that's it. Okay, in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. Good idea, Mr. Clerk. Before adjourning into closed session, let's take public comment. An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Mr. Larry Green, to be followed by Rich Reed.
Good morning. I'll try to be brief because I know a lot of people who want to speak in the allotted seven or 10 minutes, whatever it is for public comment, but I'll just make a couple of points. My name's Larry Green. First thing I want to say, in regards to Councilman Holden's comments about not being alarmist, there were over 5,000 people killed in my prior home in New York, and most of, most if not all of those airplanes were headed for Los Angeles. It's reported in today's daily news that there was an FBI memo indicating that between today and next Wednesday or Thursday, bridges in California are being targeted. This is an FBI memo given to Western State Police Officers. I don't call Governor Davis's actions yesterday being alarmist. I consider him to be a hero and I applaud him for doing what he did. I also want to say, this is a terrible way to unite the city of LA, but the events of September 11th, for one, have really gravitated me to respect more than ever what the LAPD has been doing behind the scenes, the LA Fire Department, and, and of course, the mayor's office, and you, the city council. The very fact that nothing has happened so far in Los Angeles doesn't mean there haven't been dangers or threats. And you don't get credit for the work you've all done behind the scenes, but I for one know that there have been a lot of incidences averted and, and you've done a great job, you deserve to be commended. On a happier note, on a much happier note, I want to point out in today's daily news, a great picture, it says, "Giving Daddy a Helping Hand." And in this story, many of you who were lucky enough to be up at the observatory yesterday saw Mary Kate LeBange holding the hand of Tom LeBange as Tom LeBange was holding Charles LeBange. And this is a great photo, giving Daddy a helping hand. And all LeBanges, Bridget, Tom, Charles, and Mary Kate are in here, and I hope it won't be long before they'll be signing autographs. Anyway, my, my last congratulations to Tom LeBange and keep up the good work to all of you and keep your chins up. And thanks again, Mr. Padilla, for your, your honor you conveyed upon me today. We'll be taping tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rich Reed.
During the last several months, I've spoken to the council about education reforms, which could reasonably expect it to get results like 90% of 7-year-old kids who could read Shakespeare in the Britannica and look at full scores of symphonies and read the correct pitches of all the notes. I'd like to suggest that in addition to Los Angeles, I've been contacting people from some other cities, and you might consider a friendly competition with some of those cities, to see which could be first to get such results. I'd recently talked with the chairman of the music department at Princeton University, who has my papers, had a packet of them right with him when we were talking, and he said he would use the papers to teach music to his father-in-law. If he gets results with his father-in-law, as good as I've gotten with some five-year-old children, that might be a step toward a breakthrough at Princeton. I've also visited some churches here in Los Angeles. At one of them, I've met with three of the pastors. The languages they're responsible for are English, Spanish, and Tagalog. Talked with them about making English spelling more like Spanish, more like Tagalog, and computerizing the process. And one of the pastors played a bit on my music keyboard. I attended the NAACP convention, which was here in Los Angeles a couple of weeks ago. Met Willie Brown, had not met him since he was Speaker of the Assembly, reminded him of things I had shared with him before. He asked me to send him papers to San Francisco. That would be a good competition. Also at the conference, I met some other people I had not met before, including Kwesi Umfume, the president of the NAACP, at S East in Baltimore, of course, the headquarters, another competition. Merle Evers Williams, the former chair, and Bill Russell, the basketball legend. I had talked with him on the phone, left papers for him, and he told me later when I met him that he had gotten the papers. As a last point, I'd like to mention, some of you may have seen the picture, it was in the Daily Breeze, it might have been in other papers. Jamie Lee Curtis, dealing with education, Rob Reiner, Andy Garcia in today's paper. I met Ms. Curtis for the first time last week at the school where she has a kindergarten child and gave her a packet, and she said that she would look at the papers herself. If she starts seeing what her current five-year-old could do in two years, and if Hollywood would actually start enlightening the public about these ideas, things could happen very, very fast. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. And with that, we will now adjourn to closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers.
Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, that matter is approved. That also will go forth with?
The desk is clear.
All right.
You didn't get, you didn't get much happening, did you?
There is a request to forthwith item 17 on the regular agenda, which we will sow order. Okay, now is the time for adjourning. Is there any adjournment motion? Would all please stand? The chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd ask that you join me today in adjourning in memory of Irving Lair, the father of David Lair, the director of the Anti-Defamation League in Los Angeles. Irving Lair lived to 93 years. He, he passed away on October 21st. He's survived by his wife Trudy, his children, David, Sheila, and Michael, and many grandchildren. For those of you, most of you in this room know David Lair, I would imagine. He's an exceptional person. He's a warm person. That's, that's a warmth and a, and a sense of family that he got from his father. They were a very close-knit family. They had Shabbat every Friday night, and they would often take family vacations together, just the 21 of them. So I'd ask that you join me and, for all members.
We'll have all members on that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Clerk, call the roll. The meeting is adjourned.